Basically, to express my frustration as a city council not being able to provide oversight to the city clerk's department. The city clerk by charter is an elected official and has his own authority and independence from the council. We may, I don't even know if it's within our realm as a council to give suggestions to the city clerk. The city clerk does not have to take any of those issues or recommendations because he is his own sovereign, his own authority in that department. So I would like to see, within the bounds of our charter, I'd like a report to see if there's any way that the city council can have greater oversight of the city clerk's department. And I'd like that to come back in the report. It can be in several months. It doesn't have to be election, this is not election-related, but just as a general sense. Would someone second that?
I second.
Thank you. Onto a lighter note. As you know, that this holiday season, the city council allocated funds for an ice skating rink next to City Hall. And I would like to thank all of our staff that made this a possibility. I'd like to thank my council members, those who did support it, for supporting it and allocating funds. The funds came from Measure S, which was part of our sales tax measure which passed in 2018, in the November election in 2018. And just to be clear, one of the categories for expenditures, actually in the second listed category, the funds are permitted to be used for park improvements and recreation programs and services. Clearly, an ice skating rink is a recreation program and service. And it's, on top of that, we cited it, we located it, in an area of the city that is park poor outside City Hall in the southern half of the city. So, as a recap, things got very exciting on the skating rink. We had some rain for about five or six rain days, but towards the end, we had to turn people away from the skating rink. So, I would like to thank everyone who skated, all the young kids who skated, all the adults who tried to skate and maybe fell down and got some bumps and bruises. I think it was a great expenditure of funds because it brought some happiness and joy. I'd like to thank Lila Sideman from the news press for covering this issue, and for the editors who felt free to post two letters with residents who held an opposite opinion. But we have some video regarding the skating rink, and I want everyone to just take a That's great. The council will hold its own discussions at budget time in a few months as to if we want to continue this program, scale it back, increase it. That's a discussion that's held on, will be held on an annual basis. So, thank you, everyone, for those who participated. Are there any other comments from council, staff? Okay, let's move on to the next item.
Mr. Mayor and council, I do want to remind people that we do have this infamous machine from the county, the Voting Solutions for All People machine, in the police community room until the 25th of January, available for people to come in and see. The hours are posted on our website, on glendalevotes.org. They'll be able to see what times they can go, but it's open till 8:00 PM in the evening for people to be able to go over and view this machine themselves, as well as for anyone who wishes to go from the council can go. I know that you went earlier today.
I went and I voted, and...
Yeah, Tuesday through Saturday, by the way, and the hours on Saturday differ. But it is from 11:00 to 8:00 PM during the week, except for Monday.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is community event announcements. This is the three-minute portion.
The first speaker is Nicholas Martins.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and staff. The Glendale Environmental Coalition would like to take this opportunity to sincerely congratulate city staff and city council on Glendale's participation in the Elan Battery and Storage project. We are proud that Glendale is part of the project that supports union jobs, is extremely cost-effective, and increases the amount of solar energy used to power our city. We are heartened by the positive collaboration between the city of Los Angeles and the city of Glendale, and commend our city leaders for working together towards our mutually shared and mutually challenging goals. This is the type of collaboration it is going to take for all of our communities to meet the 100 percent carbon-free by 2045 goals of California's state mandates. GEC members have been championing the Elan project for several months with advocacy at LADWP meetings that led up to the green light for this project. We believe this is exactly the kind of solar paired with storage initiative that it will take to produce reliable electricity and replace the need for new gas generation at Grayson. We consider this positive movement in the right direction. Our members also look forward to seeing much-needed local development soon. It is imperative that we press forward with creating resilient, localized microgrids by adding solar paired with battery storage on existing rooftops, covered reservoirs, large parking lot carports, et cetera, on both public and private sites throughout our city. We look forward to updates on the four clean energy projects approved last July by council, as well as new projects that were recently mentioned in these chambers. Thank you, and again, congratulations and great job.
Thank you for coming forward, Glendale Environmental Coalition, and good job on your advocacy at the LADWP level. And together, we can make things happen. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think I want to...
Mr. Garpetian?
Yeah, Mr. Zern is here. Correct me if I'm wrong, I think with the Elan One project, our renewable portfolio moved up to 45 percent from 35 percent.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it actually moved up a little higher than that, but yeah, we...
I'm being a little concerned.
Yeah. And I appreciate that. Better to err to the side of caution.
Yeah, so we're at 45...
It was a huge boost for us.
Right.
And a very good project.
Thank you, Steve, for your advocacy as well. Next speaker is the Youth and Government from the YMCA.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian and fellow council members. My name is Omar Oscar Goshan. I'm the president of Glendale YMCA's Youth and Government Program. Youth and Government is California's premier civic engagement program, which is where high school students convene, and we create delegations, which is where we create a bill. So, we start, we meet for six months, and we work very hard to create this bill and get it passed at our Sacramento conference. This Sacramento conference occurs in February, which is where we literally take over the Capitol, and Senate and Assembly program areas, meet in actual Senate chambers and Assembly chambers, and debate our bill.
Hello, Nicole here. With that being said, we invite you guys to our bill hearing night, which is going to be February 6, 6:00 to 7:30 PM at the Central Library Auditorium. This night is where we are going to debate our bill, and it would mean a lot if the council members and community members would come and join us in order to listen to us debate our bill and, at the end, to provide us with feedback. This feedback would really help us in Sacramento when we are going to debate it in our mock Senate and Assembly, and we need to get that bill passed. And with all the feedback that we would receive, this would help us make our bill strong and not have any holes in it, therefore, being able to pass it in the Assembly and Senate. There will be refreshments and opportunities to financially support the Youth and Government, which we greatly appreciate, and thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Garpetian.
Yes, just want to welcome both of you. My daughter is part of this program. We all love you last year. This is not an easy program, I got to tell you. They go to different conferences before they get to the Capitol and Sacramento and present their bill. Can you tell us about the bill from last year?
Yes. Last year, our bill focused on, focused on bettering the treatment of animals in factory farms. So, our bill required all factory farms in California to submit a biannual report, which states waste, the waste levels and how waste is dealt with, feeding times, and the measurements of sleeping quarters and such. So, we want, because we wanted to make sure that these animals are being treated a lot better because of how horribly they're treated right now. And this year, our bill has to do with bettering the English as Second Language program for all schools in California.
You guys did a great job. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Dennis Argüelles.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the council. My name is Dennis Argüelles. I'm the Los Angeles Program Manager for the National Parks Conservation Association, but I'm really proud to be addressing you this evening because I'm a Glendale resident. Very proud Glendale resident because Glendale cares about its open space, its trails, its wildlife, its parks. And in that spirit, I want to invite the council to an event that our organization, along with a couple of our key partners, is organizing on January 25. We're calling it a Service Day for our parks. And on that day, we'll be at Brown Park. We currently have nearly 100 volunteers RSVP'd for the morning, where we'll be working under the supervision of your Community Services and Parks Department to help restore the habitat and ecosystem of Brown Park. We'll be working to remove invasive species, and in doing so, hopefully, improving the habitat for wildlife, making the park more resilient to wildfires. And at the end of the morning, about noon, we're going to have a program to thank the volunteers, and we really appreciate, if you don't have time to join us that morning and roll up your sleeves and get dirty with us, we appreciate your time to come by, say some words of encouragement to the volunteers, and to thank them for their service. We've also talked with the department about possibly doing some type of recognition for the late Mark Sturdivant, who was a personal hero of mine and who I had the pleasure and honor of working with over the years. That morning, we'll also be doing a little education around the Rim of the Valley, which is a priority from our organization in the Southern California area. And as you folks hopefully know, that's a bill currently making its way through Congress that will expand the boundaries of the Santa Monica Mountains National Recreation Area, include our beloved Verdugo Mountains and Santa Rafael Hills, Glendale Narrows. And this will help enhance the management of those areas by bringing park service resources to those areas. So, again, please join us on the 25th, and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Now, I'm moving into the three-minute general public comments.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Mike Mohill. About 10 days ago, I sent out, excuse me, set out all the council candidates a questionnaire asking in 150 words or less, what are the two most important issues you would want to tackle on council? I have already received two replies, and another council candidate has already said by the end of this week they would submit their statement. Your statement would be read by thousands of our readers. Your Glendale Community Newsletter readers are probably some of the most informed residents of Glendale. The statement by our candidate will be published in a forthcoming edition of your Glendale Community Newsletter. We look forward to hearing from all the candidates by the end of this week. Thank you. On a second added note, I'd like to thank Ms. Devine for bringing up AB 68 and the issue surrounding it. We should, by all means, challenge the state, because the state of California has, between AB 68 and SB 50, they're going to neuter this city council for any type of planning. And it's not going to stop. Right now, it's just for the housing. We don't know what's next. The governor hates being told by the federal government how to run his state, or we should get mad at the governor and say, "We're mad at you for telling us how we should run our city." Our city has its own rules and regulations. We're unique, Glendale, from Pasadena, Burbank, et cetera. But to have the governor tell us how we should do our housing is terrible. ADUs, who wants an ADU next to them? Not only going to have one, you can have two now. We have triplex counties now, cities. And SB 50 is going to be worse. It's all going to affect historic districts. We need to fight this bill, both AB 68 and SB 50. You've read them all. You've read my Community Newsletter. You know what's going on. I'm having another letter going out this week on SB 50. Laura Freeman, City Women's Laura Freeman, is behind AB 68. Please, people, write her and tell her what she's doing to our city is horrible. And she supports historic distance, can you believe? And Scott Weiner, up there in San Francisco, is pushing SB Senate Bill 50. But please, council member, do your part. You don't want to have Sacramento telling you what you should do. Glendale is unique. We know that. We're different than LA, Burbank, every, every city, every county, and we're proud of that. That's why people move to Glendale. Let's not, let's keep your focus, and let's not navigate someplace else. Thank you. I want to thank you, Mr. Garpetian and Ms. Devine, again, for bringing up and discussing AB 68 in discussion forward. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Tony Passarella.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. Tony Passarella, 30, I think he's 33-year member, resident of the city of Glendale. I oppose 5G small cell sites for the reasons of aesthetics, health, safety, fire hazard risks.
Mr. Passarella, let me stop the clock.
I know it's on the agenda.
Yeah, so, this is for only items that are not on the agenda.
Oh.
So, this will be on the agenda, and so you can make those exact comments after we hear the report on the 5G. I'm sorry?
Can't do it now.
No. It won't be that, we're almost there, but we have to keep it in order.
Okay, all right.
Thank you for understanding that.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian and council members, and thank you for your service. And I'm Susan Wolfson. I want to, I had a plan to come here this evening and carry on about AB 68 and SB 50. And I also want to thank you, Councilmember Devine, for taking at least some action this evening, and Councilmember Garpetian for seconding it. I hope that you guys will stay the course and pursue action, band together with other cities. I think it's tyranny. Tyranny comes in many forms. People elect council members at cities so that they can create zoning ordinances that have teeth in them and that can be enforced, because that's how we want our neighborhoods to be. These types of bills will destroy quiet, single-family residential neighborhoods, maybe not immediately, but gradually. And I think that would be a terrible thing. I think that a quiet, single-family residential neighborhood ought to be an option for people to have. So, again, I really appreciate, I really appreciate your taking some action tonight, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Yes, I just want to make a quick comment or clarification that we go lobby Sacramento every quarter through different organizations, whether it's California Contract Cities, League of California Cities, as well as SCAG. And the different groups go to different elected officials up in Sacramento and lobby for all the issues we have. And everything that you see come out of the different cities, such as the threat to, you know, file a lawsuit against SB 50, or the other, the other bills, is coming from those lobbying efforts. And it takes so much time and energy from council members and elected officials to do that consistently every quarter. It's not easy, but that's our job, as you mentioned. We were elected to represent our residents and our constituents, and just to look after the well-being of our city and not let the quality of life go to waste because of some of these laws that are being passed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. That ends this portion of oral communications. What is the next item, please?
Next item is, under Action Items, ADA's City Attorney regarding discussion of local regulatory authority relating to the permitting of wireless telecommunications facilities and small cell attachments. ADA 1 is a motion to note and file. 2 is a motion directing staff.
Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The council asked our office to provide a overview and summary of the federal and state laws affecting wireless telecommunications facilities, cell towers, and small cells and the like, and provide a overview of the scope of municipal authority over such facilities, and in particular, how Glendale's municipal code provisions fold into that, into that authority. So, Ms. Marrosian is going to make a presentation to you this evening, and will be happy to answer any questions. I would note that in 2010, the council, after some pretty extensive outreach and study sessions, enacted what we feel is a very extensive ordinance that applies to wireless telecommunications facilities, including small cells, and it still provides the city the protections that it can protect under federal and state laws, and we'll go through those and happy to answer any questions as we go along.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Najarian, council members. My name is Doreen Marterosian.
I'm sorry, Doreen. Do you have a question, council member?
I do. When you said provides protection that we are able to do, is that what you said, that ordinance? Can you repeat that, please? I think that's an important statement.
Well, what I'm saying is, we're going to address how our municipal code provide, allows us to regulate in those areas that federal and state law allows us to regulate.
We are allowed to regulate.
So, including aesthetic, protectionist traffic, those sort of things. We'll discuss those in the course of this presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Najarian, council members. My name is Doreen Marterosian, and tonight, we are going to provide you with an overview of the federal laws and regulations that pertain to wireless transmitting telecommunications facilities, state laws, application, the application approval timeline requirements, which are commonly referred to as the shot clocks. There are three types of shot clocks that we will be discussing. Shot clocks for macro sites, or the larger cell towers, if we refer to them. Shot clocks for existing site modifications, they're slightly different, and also shot clocks for small cell sites. We will also be discussing a summary of the municipal authority, what the cities can and cannot do when it comes to wireless telecommunications facilities, and we will also summarize and discuss Glendale's ordinance. So, wireless telecommunications facilities are defined as any facility that transmits or receives electromagnetic waves. Now, that just doesn't mean just the antennas. It also includes the cabinets, the meters, the vaults, any support structure for the telecommunications facilities. Within that definition is the definition for small cell. It's still a wireless telecommunications facility, however, it's limited by maximum height. Small cells originated from what we used to call DAS, which was a distributed antenna system. They were the original small cells that came into being about 30 years ago. They're smaller than the macro cell towers, and they're used to fill gaps. Now, we're going to show you some pictures of what we have approved within the city and what we would not approve based on our aesthetic standards. So, on the left with the green checkmark is an approved small cell facility, and on the right, and the pictures on the right, I just, in all candor, I got them randomly from the internet. These are things, and in consultation with the different city staff, these are things that we would not want to approve within the city based on aesthetic standards. Again, the picture on the left is another approved small cell attachment to a streetlight, and on the right is what we wouldn't want. Same thing here, that's another approved attachment. Again, a picture of another approved small cell attachment. Now, going back to the History of Telecommunications Act, it was adopted, enacted in 1996. It established federal statutes, one of the sections being Section 253A, which basically prohibits states, local agencies, cities from establishing any regulations or laws, moratoria included, that would prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the ability of wireless carriers to provide their service. We also have federal statute 47, United States Code, Section 332C, and it establishes the shot clock. We'll go over that, and I'll refer back to what, which types of facilities this shot clock applies to. It also addresses radio frequency or RF jurisdiction. It prohibits discrimination among different providers, so cities have to treat all of the wireless providers the same. And it basically requires a city that is denying an application to state that denial in writing, and support the denial by substantial evidence, meaning it has to set forth reasons as to why it's denying the application. Now, this is the shot clock that applies to the macro cells or the large cell towers. The cities have 150 days from the time the permit application has been submitted to review the applications for new facilities, meaning they're going to build it from the ground up. It's 90 days to review applications for colocations or smaller facilities attached to new locations, and it's 60 days to review the applications for small cells which are attached to poles, utility poles and streetlights. Again, if a city fails to meet these deadlines, these shot clock deadlines, then the application is deemed approved, which means that the parties will then go to court, the provider will argue the city did not act timely, so my application, my permit should be issued and granted, and then the city will have, has the burden to establish or show why it failed to agree, failed to move within the shot clock. RF, Section 332, also addresses radio frequency. Basically, it specifically states that local government, cities, cannot deny a wireless telecommunications facility permit based on the environmental effects of radio frequency. FCC has sole jurisdiction to oversee RF. Now, what the cities can do is request that the providers produce a certificate of compliance with the FCC's RF safety standards, and we do request that. So, once a provider submits the certificate, then the RF safety standards are deemed to have been met and satisfied. Continuing with federal laws and regulations, in 2012, Section 6409 was enacted. We commonly refer to it as Section 6409A. Basically, this is for existing facilities. And it says that state and local governments may not deny and shall approve an eligible facilities request. Now, an eligible facilities request is defined as a request for modification. It could be a provider coming to a city and saying, "Look, I need to replace my antenna with something like-for-like, or I want to replace it with a bigger antenna." As long as it's not a substantial change, and 6409 was silent on what a substantial change is, so then FCC sets standards and thresholds, meaning if it doesn't go beyond a maximum height width that's determined by the FCC, then it's deemed to not be a substantial change, and it's an eligible facility because it's existing, and they're replacing it, repairing it, modifying it, so the cities have no choice but to deem them approved. Now, Section 6409A has its own shot clocks. This is, this is what I talked about in the beginning when I said that it's for existing facilities. And the permit is deemed granted once the application is submitted. If the city does not act within 60 days after submittal, then it's deemed granted. The city has to advise the applicant in writing within 30 days why the application is incomplete, if we think something's missing. And then, once the provider or the applicant resubmits the application, then the city has 10 days to review it, and it just goes on. We review, we respond, and they get a chance to correct the deficiencies. Colocations. Colocations are allowed under both federal statute and state law. Colocations are, in all candor, preferred by both the wire... Colocations are, in all candor, preferred by both the wireless industry and by the municipalities, and their reasons are the wireless industry prefers colocations because they get better rates, because they're sharing space with other providers, and there is less competition over that preferred pole or that preferred location that every provider wants to attach to. Municipalities prefer colocations because it's less clutter and utilization of less poles. If we can have aesthetically satisfied permits or plans which allow for multiple providers to be in one location, that's much preferred as to having them on every pole or multiple locations within the city. Joint polls. We have what is called the Southern California Joint Poll Committee. It was established in the early 1900s, and it covers utility poles, not streetlights, and it is comprised of members who jointly own the poll. They own space on a poll. The members are, there's a list of members published online, which the public have access to. The members are entities such as Glendale, Burbank, Los Angeles, Pasadena, Crown Castle, Verizon, AT&amp;T. And the purpose of the Joint Poll Committee was to limit the number of utility poles in the field. Again, each member owns a certain amount of space on the poll, and they have rights to access and install facilities on the space that they own. The members do have to adhere to the Joint Poll Committee requirements and obtain the Joint Poll Committee approvals when they want to attach something within their space. And of course, the attachments need to meet aesthetic standards, poll load standards, and they are subject to encroachment permits for those that fall within the public right-of-way. Now, we have the September 2018 FCC order, which was geared exclusively towards small cells. What it did was it established a fee cap of $270 per small cell attachment, and it addresses, it set its own set of new shot clocks again. So this is the third category of shot clocks that is for small cells, and it said for applications for small cells to be attached to existing structures, those are utility poles, streetlights, traffic signals, a building. The shot clock is 60 days from the time that the applicant submits the application. Small cells that are attached to a new structure, for example, if the provider was offering or proposing to build a streetlight, to attach a small cell onto it, it's 90 days, the deadline for the cities to review the application. And the shot clock application commences upon the submission, the shot clock, sorry, the shot clock commences upon the submission of the application, which means the minute that they submit the application to the city, the clock, the 60 days or the 90 days starts ticking. It's not when the application is complete or when the city says, "Yes, we have everything that we need." And the municipality has 10 days to notify the applicant in writing if the application is incomplete. As you know, the League of Cities has challenged the 2018 FCC order. There is a matter pending before the Ninth Circuit Court, so at any given day, we are hoping for a request from the court to hear oral arguments, and we'll see where it goes. And the challenge is mainly based on the fee cap, as well as the shot clock, and the prohibitions that is imposed on the municipalities. Now, the latest FCC order was issued on December 4 of 2019, and that order addresses radio frequency or RF exclusively. It basically resolves and terminates, and this is a quote from the order itself, "The inquiry to review the FCC RF exposure standards." So back in 1996, when the Telecommunication Act came into being, the FCC set the RF safety standards, which is what I talked about, that the cities can't regulate based on RF, but what we can do is ask the applicant to provide us a certificate that they're complying with the FCC's RF safety standards. So the FCC in the order said that it found no appropriate basis to reevaluate the existing RF exposure limits, and it said that it's, it based its decision based on the Food and Drug Administration, the FDA, and the Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA, and it just basically said that we find no evidence that links cell phones to any health problems. That was the FCC's basis. The FCC also declined, as stated in the December 4 order, to reevaluate the RF exposure policy that it has as it pertains to children. It did say in the order that, "Look, we concede that children's bodies may process RF differently than an adult body. However, we still don't think that there's sufficient evidence for us to reopen the RF exposure limits." Now, the FCC December 2019 order also created some RF testing exemptions for the providers. Basically, if the providers can meet either of the three criteria, then they're exempt from RF testing, and the criteria are they either, it's, the facility is extremely low-power device, which transmits no more than 1 milliwatt, or the proposed facility, it has a somewhat higher power, however, it's going to be away from the human body by 40 centimeters, or if the facility is within the limits that's set by the FCC. So if the device or the transmitter falls under one of the above three, then no additional action is necessary. If it does not, then the provider has to perform the routine evaluation that they would to demonstrate to the FCC that their proposed facility is safe and to get the certification.
I do have a quote. How far is 40 centimeters in my language, my measurement system? So somewhat higher-powered devices with transmitting antenna which operate within 20 inches of the body? Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Finally, the FCC December 2019 order denied the industry, so the industry was asking the FCC to make the standards for their installation of small cells more lax, and the FCC said, "No, we're not going to do that," by more lax, meaning no signage, no cautionary measures required, and the FCC said, "No, we're not going to do that because we feel that the small cells are being installed where individuals, you know, people, pedestrians, have access to them." So the FCC went ahead and set mitigation measures to make sure that safety is complied with when it comes to RF exposure. The mitigation requirements depend on the physical characteristics of the proposed facility. It could be signage that precludes the public from entering the area. It could be signage that says the workers that need to go into the area need to have the appropriate gear, and any other signage that the FCC finds appropriate, given the facility, where it's placed, and its capability. On a state level, we have Assembly Bill 57. It was passed in 2016, enacted government code, Section 65964.1, which basically echoes or reiterates the shot clocks, and it says if the cities fail to act, then it's deemed approved. Shot clocks can be told or paused per mutual agreement of the parties. So if it's a project that they're working on, and cities do that, we have done that, you can ask the other party, and they told a shot clock for a period of 30 days, 45 days, however much time you need. Under state laws, it's in the report, there's also California Public Utilities Code, Section 7901, which allows telephone companies, that telephone company, the definition includes wireless providers, to locate within the public right-of-way. And then, Section 7901.1, so 7901 says, "We can't deny them to be in our right-of-way." And then, the next section says, "However, cities can regulate them based on a time, place, manner," which means we can look at safety, we can look at aesthetics, we can look at whether they're obstructing the public right-of-way, so we can regulate them based on that. We also have the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, which has categorical exemptions, and small cells are exempted under Section 15303, unless there are special circumstances that would warrant an exception from the exemption, which is then the municipality could ask for a SEQA review. A summary of what municipalities can and cannot do. Again, we covered this under the federal statutes. We cannot have moratoria, or we cannot have regulations that prohibit wireless carriers from coming into the city. We can regulate wireless communication facilities under time, place, manner, and that's traffic hazards, whether it's pedestrian, vehicular, bicyclists that have to traverse, and they could, you know, get hit or get impacted by the facilities, for example. Pole loads, of course, we have to comply with GO95 when they're on the utility poles. They have other safety regulations. Aesthetics, reasonable standards, and noise, that can be taken into a factor if they emit too much noise. FCC has exclusive jurisdiction over RF, and we are allowed to request certification that they do meet FCC RF safety standards. Now, next is a summary of our Glendale Municipal Code or the GMC. So we have two sections in the GMC that regulate wireless telecommunications facilities. For public right-of-ways, we have Chapter 12.08037, and for private properties or city-owned properties that are not right-of-ways, meaning parks properties that are located in city parks, we have Title 30. In the public right-of-way, the preferred zones are commercial and industrial locations. We want the facilities to go there. Non-preferred zones are the residential zones or the historic districts. So applications for installations in preferred zones are reviewed and decided by the Director of Public Works without a public hearing. Applications for installation in non-preferred zones, which is in the residential zones and historic districts, they require community notification and a notice public hearing prior to the Director of Public Works issuing a decision. Now, the applicants, it's a little more stringent, a lot more stringent actually, for an applicant to get an approval in a non-preferred zone. For example, for a proposed site which is inside a residential zone or within 1,000 feet of a residential zone, the applicant has to have a robust alternative site analysis. It has to show us why the applicant can't locate anywhere else in a preferred zone, why the applicant has to be where it's asking to be. And they need to show that the preferred location in the zone is not reasonably feasible. They can't just say, "Well, we just want to be here." They have to give us good reason. For private property or city-owned, non-right-of-way property, again, the preferred zones are commercial, mixed-use and industrial locations. The non-preferred zones are residential zones or historic districts. Applications for installations in preferred zones are reviewed and decided by the Director of Community Development, and applications for installations in non-preferred zones are reviewed by the Planning Commission. Again, same criteria. Applicant has to meet additional conditions to be in a non-preferred zone, its approval at a higher level, and has to demonstrate that a significant gap exists, and it cannot be met by any of the alternate sites that they may have available to them. They have to show us good reason. And for the alternative site analysis, again, the applicant has to show us, has to make a good faith effort and show us why it can't go on the sites that are in the preferred So again, in summary, both Glendale Municipal Code, Chapter 12.08 and Title 30, they require the applicant to have accurate mapping of its facilities, certification of the FCC compliance for the RF, justification of the facility that it's proposing, analysis of alternative sites, visual impact analysis, and demonstrate to the city that the proposed facility has been designed to the minimum height and diameter standards that it can be. And with that, we welcome your questions and discussion.
And if I could just briefly add on to that or amplify a couple of things, and we talked about, actually, we talked about preemption earlier in the context of something else, state preemption of local government, but in this case, the United States Congress gave specific authority to the FCC to make those RF emission determinations, and as Doreen mentioned, they just went through again, concluding in December of last year. Take another look at that through the rulemaking process that the federal agencies have to go through, and again, because they were told by EPA and other federal environmental agencies that there was no, in their view, there was no credible information upon which to make stricter standards, those standards stay in place, and again, those standards, every municipality is subject to them, and meaning that, you know, local agencies can't deviate from what is required by the FCC. And then, the other thing, just wanted to again emphasize that our code, following the authority given to it, you know, obviously treats residential differently. We can't discriminate against any particular carrier. We can't effectively prohibit wireless, any type of wireless technology, but we can impose them to a stricter standard, and we do that by requiring a different level of review and also requiring, specifically, if they want to go into preferred zones such as, non-preferred zones such as residential, they have to show they can't, they can't provide that service by providing it in a preferred zone like a commercial zone. So that's, that's kind of where the lay of the land is, and we're certainly happy to expand on any of those issues or answer questions.
Thank you, Doreen. So we, just to put this in context, we had heard from many of you in the public about the 5G issue, and we asked the city attorney to come forward and give us the parameters and the options available to the city to regulate these 5G cells, if you will. And as you heard, it doesn't sound like we have much discretion in permitting these, aside from the time, place-
Manner.
Manner.
Correct.
Restrictions. But we want to hear from the public, so I have many cards. Let's start with Tony Passarella, because he came up and I sat him down.
Okay. I'm just hoping you can do that.
Okay.
Start over then. Good evening, Tony Passarella. Good evening.
Mayor.
Mayor.
Just a minute, Mr. Passarella. Let me just see how many cards we have here. That's what I'm, I'm trying to see if we can afford the full three minutes for each person. We've got probably close to 20. We'll do three minutes.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff. Tony Passarella, 33, not member, but resident of the city of Glendale. I oppose small, 5G small cell sites for reasons of aesthetics, health, safety, fire hazard, reduction of property values, and harm to the environment. I'm going to change my presentation completely because Assistant City Attorney showed these photos. Already bring up the, bring up the photos of the installation. So every single photo with the X on it, there's already an installation in Glendale, and you've all seen those. I sent you in the past presentations I made, and I sent you just the other day, and I think I sent you something today, if I'm not mistaken. That, those are all-
Do you want me to go through them?
Those, yeah, one by one. Those are all installed now. Look at that, hold on that one, backup. So, so there's your regulation right there. You could, you could regulate, do the aesthetics and safety, backup already right there. Now, council members, please, study that if you will. Do you deem that safe? I mean, what about weather condition? What about storms? What about, you know? And these are going up by a school, by the schools? 1150 Virginia? Show the pictures, the other pictures. Yeah, yeah, they can catch on fire. I mean, I got this off of Google Images. It's not an isolated incident where these things catch on fire. It happens worldwide and probably hundreds of times. These were just captured by somebody and they posted them on the internet. Yeah, there you go. That's, that's 601 Glenwood. That's one block from Hoover. The only installation that they can make there is on top of a telephone pole. There's no light standards there, which Assistant City Attorney said you could regulate, deemed on, on that. The X, the big red X, that's Toll. 700 Toll, the only installation you can make there is on a telephone pole right across the street from Toll in front of Hoover. There's no light standards there. They're not going to erect a brand-new, a brand-new facility there. Next one? That's 1150 Virginia. That's, in the background there, the red roof, that's, that's Markeppel. So that's the playground, and they want to put, and the only place you can install it there is on a telephone pole. So that's the kind of, backup already to those installations. I'm just really wound up here. That's the kind of installations you're going to- That's the kind of installations you're going to get by these schools. You tell me that that somehow can't fall off, maybe worker error, you know, maybe a car rolls up there and it falls off? Look at the wire there. It's absurd.
Thank you.
I'm asking for a thousand-foot distance away from schools, a thousand foot. That's my ask, an emergency ordinance, please.
Thank you. Ted Baumgart?
Mayor and Council, resident of Locker Center. My kids went to CD High School. Congratulations on your float. I did the Lock and Yada float, I designed it. Glendale float, you didn't like it?
We don't have one.
Oh, you don't? Glendale?
No.
Doesn't?
No. Didn't, Burbank did.
Burbank did, okay.
Let's talk 5G, Mr. Baumgart.
All right. Don't you like to have your arms twisted? The FCC is a captured agency from the telecom industry. They don't show any medical harmful effects because they have no studies, period. They don't recognize them. There's over 2,000 studies worldwide. You probably know all this, so, good luck. There's one six blocks from my house, I feel like it's a home invasion. I have, I'm a Vietnam veteran, Army Commendation Medal. I've been on our town council for seven years in the past. We've got a librarian, I mean, we've got a community standards district in. I care about the community. I'm in it in all kinds of ways. And this thing really, really, really bugs me. It just really pisses me off. So, good luck.
Thank you. Norm Masri?
I know that several individuals wanted to cede their time to me. Just so that I know how much time.
No, 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 we don't.
That's not okay?
We'll give you three minutes.
Three minutes, that's it, okay.
I thought it was five minutes.
That's what it said on the agenda.
Mr. Clerk?
For oral communication, it's five minutes. But for other items, the Chair of the meeting has the authority to regulate in this regard, the amount of time people can speak.
So we have, we're going to afford three minutes.
Three minutes?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm not, I'll quickly, okay. I am the Research Director of the California Brain Tumor Association, and my background is in chemistry. And for the past five years, my work has required me to be on the cutting edge of information regarding all wireless communication, science, law and policy. And I'm not going to go into the details of that. To put it simply, 5G does not work. The 5G that this industry promised to provide us with lightning speed, connectivity, low latency and high data throughput has all been a gimmick in for the telecom industry. 5G and the reasons why small cells were purported to require locations so close to homes was due to higher frequency waves or millimeter waves. 5G was supposed to work on frequencies above 24 gigahertz. These frequencies do not travel long distances and therefore require small cells to be located close to homes. In comparison, previous generation technologies, 2G, 3G and 4G, work on lower frequency waves, anywhere from 0.7 gigahertz to 2.5 gigahertz compared to 24. That's a lot lower. And cell towers were located miles away from users and reception was still possible. 5G, like it was initially defined at frequencies of 24 to 90 gigahertz, worked well in the laboratory, but absolutely does not work in real life, as evidenced by sampling of tech articles. These are from tech magazines. And I would like to give each one of you a copy of this to read. In the tech magazines, one of the industry magazines, The Venture Beat, says, "Small cells are expensive to install, reach too few customers and must not be, and might not be economically feasible for nationwide rollout." That's the harsh conclusion of research analyst Moffett Nathanson via multichannel. Other tech magazine articles have echoed the same facts. In a report written by the Department of, for the Department of Defense by the Defense Innovation Board on April of 2019, this is a quote directly from them. "While its short wavelengths and narrowness of its beam allow for improvement, resolution and security of data transfer, these qualities can also restrict the distance at which millimeter waves can propagate. This creates a high infrastructure cost as a millimeter wave network would require densely populated base stations throughout a geographic area to ensure uninterrupted connectivity. This challenge is further aggravated by the fact that millimeter waves can easily be blocked by obstacles like walls, foliage and body, in the body itself, and also rain. They don't work." So, industry has found this out. And, you know, they did studies in Sacramento, they put them up, and they don't work. Furthermore, they also said that all these industries, AT&amp;T, Verizon, Sprint and T-Mobile are billions of dollars in debt, and they will not do this. But let me just tell you this very quickly. These companies have realized that millimeter waves are not working. And they're using this platform of 5G small cells to put them near homes and instead putting 4G and very low frequency waves that travel for miles. So you can actually have them put very far away. They don't need to be close to homes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, of course. Mr. Quintero?
You said you are the Director or somehow are affiliated with the Brain Tumor Association?
Yeah, the California Brain Tumor Association.
Do you have studies? Because I noticed in the packet that we were given, there are a number of different studies talking about.
There are over 10,000 studies on this. It's studied more than, than to that.
Hold on, hold on.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't the one who provided you with this. But I will, I will give you these. There are over 10,000 studies, and military has done studies on this back in 1960.
No, no, hold on, ma'am. You can give it to the clerk, and the clerk will pass it to us. Thank you.
Okay, and I'll give this to the clerk as well. Just, I also wanted to let you know that there is a court ruling that passed that allows you to require NIPA review on every single small cell. And please look into it, the Kewa Indian Tribe Court ruling.
Are you still answering his question? I'm sorry, we.
Yes, I mean, you're asking me if there are studies on this. There are many studies. And the thing is that the industry is funding their own studies. And of course, the industry is showing that there's, like, the higher percent of the industry's studies is showing that there's no effect. While when you look at the independently funded studies, over 70% are showing effects. And actually, the National Toxicology Program, which is a US-funded $30 million study, it showed clear evidence of cancer. This study was supposed to be the gold standard. It was supposed to prove whether this is, that if this is carcinogenic or not. And it was supposed to end this debate. And that was the reason for that study.
Thank you.
But what we, what they found was clear evidence.
Thank you, ma'am. We have, I know that there's a lot of information, but I do have a lot of speakers.
And I do appreciate what you're going through. So, but I do want you to look at that.
Can I ask our city attorney? Can we use any of this information against the FCC? I mean, can we, does this matter to the FCC and what we have to decide?
So, as I mentioned, essentially, the FCC, their rules preempted the local regulation in this area.
Hold on, folks, hold on. Many of you will have your three minutes to speak.
The appropriate method to challenge our FCC rule is for someone to take it up on a legal challenge within 60 days of that. I believe there's some litigation challenging it. But, you know, it's in place, it's enforceable, we're subject to it. And, you know, I'm not here to take sides on whose studies are right or not. It's vested solely with FCC to make those determinations. And they did it after engaging whatever studies they engaged in. I believe that they relied on EPA and other environmental agencies at the federal level to make that determination. And so, you know, we are bound by that. And we can't rely on other studies to make other determinations, require other mitigations for RF emission, environmental or health effect purposes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you give me three more minutes, I can also give you another court ruling that would have helped you a lot significantly.
Julie Levine?
Hi, good evening, members of the city council, et cetera. You all know me, I've met with most of you. We've showed you the thousands of studies, we've showed you the documentation. We really believe that you wanted to be innovative. I was extremely disappointed in this report. It frankly could have been written by the FCC. This report does not speak to any of the things we discussed as to how you, as a city, interested in safeguarding the safety of your children and your most vulnerable populations, could find a way not to move forward with this. It just reads like this is their rules. So it doesn't talk about any moratoriums, it doesn't talk about any ordinances. Remember, I gave you some ordinances, and we talked about some of the better ordinances with thousand-feet setbacks, with not having them by schools, et cetera. We talked about all of those things, none of it is in here. I'm really discouraged. It also doesn't talk about the fact that the Fair Housing Act and the Americans with Disabilities Act trump the Telecom Act in terms of their importance in law. Now, I have to tell you, the FCC is extremely vulnerable right now, and they are being challenged by many municipalities. I don't see any evidence of this in the report. I don't know if these guys looked for it. I hope that they did, but I don't think so. So I think there's a lot of work that can be done by you as a municipality if you truly are concerned about the studies that we have shown you and the potential effects on all of our health with this rollout. It hasn't been proved safe. 4G wasn't tested. 2G into 3G was tested with the NTP study that Rola spoke to, showed clear evidence of cancer. We have a lot of studies here. They know it. That's why they're not moving to discovery. There are dozens of brain tumor cases in the courts for over 20 years, never gone to discovery. They just challenged, they minimized. This witness is no good, this evidence is not good. In reality, let's look at what's being done to challenge these unfair laws. Now, it so happens that the Ninth Circuit has been ruling against the FCC in a number of recent cases. The NRDC case in terms of the small cells was one very recent example of that. The decision by the FCC from the 2016 till 2019 December to say that the exposure levels did not have to be revisited after 26 years, by the way, was based on tests that were done with the cellphone right up on the ear, not even at that amount of distance that they prescribed. And our levels are among the highest in the world, and higher than Russia and China. We will be in our own lawsuits challenging those levels. We also, there's another lawsuit in the courts. It would have been nice to see the lawsuits that are in the courts right now, like the Irregulators lawsuit, all the money that we spend on the wired infrastructure that's now being used to save the money with the wireless infrastructure, the bilking and the overcosts. It is indeed a captured agency. So I would love to be a part of a special session. We would bring in engineers, scientists, doctors. You can bring in some of the people, perhaps the industry might want to bring in some. But let's have a real discussion about what we really could do to stop this from happening. Because I've been really impressed with Glendale. I haven't seen a city council that people are as happy about as the people coming into this one. Let's keep it going.
Stick around a little while.
They cannot be insured. The telecom companies are not insurable.
Thank you, Ms. Levin.
You will have the liability.
Thank you.
Hello, council members. I've been here many times. I am a Glendale resident, and I definitely oppose the 5G cell towers because of aesthetics, safety, health hazards, fire hazard, reduction of property values and environmental issues. There is a definite proof from the National Toxicology Program they've done for 19 years, a study. And they came up with the fact that it destroys the DNA. So destroying the DNA is going to increase the cancer, is going to increase all kinds of diseases. We don't want that to happen in Glendale and to your children. I am a cancer survivor, and I'm extremely scared. If my cancer comes back, then the city will be liable for it. I mean, I'm serious about this. So I really demand a study session.
Come on, no clapping.
Okay. I demanded study session. This is not just like a three-minute. We need a study session, like Julie said, to bring our experts, you know, and have a real discussion with the city councils and the Glendale residents. Thank you so much.
Thank you. First name I can't read, but the last name is Komodo?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. And my first name is pronounced Alcione. It's a very unusual name, so I understand. So other people have talked about the proven negative health effects of wireless radiation. 4G certainly, and then 5G will be 100, will be 10 to 100 times more intense. Now, last year in April, the city of Brussels in Belgium became well-known worldwide for enacting a moratorium on the 5G rollout in Brussels. In fact, in the last month, actually, the Environment Minister of Brussels said that the people of Brussels are not guinea pigs whose health can be sold for profit. More recently, the cantons of Geneva and Vod in Switzerland also enacted moratoriums. And currently, there are 126 municipalities in Italy that have done the same thing. And these cities have become very well-respected and admired worldwide among activists like ourselves. Glendale could join that group. In fact, if you did so, Glendale would be the first city in Los Angeles area to have done this, to protect the health of its citizens, instead of being among those who is willing to sell the health of its residents to the telecom companies for profit. Now, I'm a resident of Pasadena, your sister city to the east. Pasadena, I know, because I've been a longtime resident of it in South Pasadena, likes to think of itself as the most important city, the leader locally. Well, Glendale can steal a march on my hometown. And you can show them and all of the other municipalities in the area, in the region, that Glendale can be and will be a leader in this respect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ara Manugian, and I've met with most of you regarding this issue over the last year. I'm coming here again today to remind you that the FCC, or any federal agency or Congress, does not have the right to force you to enforce their regulations. The anti-commandeering doctrine, which the Supreme Court confirmed in 1842, prevents them from telling you what to do. The regulations with Mr. Garcia and Ms. Marjorie O'Sean told you you have to follow is not true. I encourage you to further research the anti-commandeering doctrine, which, again, the Supreme Court confirmed in 1842, that prevents them from telling you, Congress and federal agencies, what to do. As you've also heard about the study, the $30 million, 19-year study, 4G and 5G causes cancer and harms DNA. And those studies, the DNA portion of that was concluded in December of last, of 2019. And in 2018, the part about cancer was concluded, and those were the findings. Because you do not have to follow the federal, the FCC's regulation, and Congress cannot tell you what to do, it is up to you to protect the people of Glendale and to uphold your oath of office to protect them under, if you have to challenge the FCC by law. As Julie said, ADA and the Fair Housing Act does provide you that. So people are not in danger, and let that not be your legacy if you, God forbid, you do pass this and allow this to happen. I also call for a study session, it is very much needed, so you can better understand, and these reports can be presented, because in a three-minute presentation, you're going to get nothing. But we did have 15-minute conversations, half-hour conversations with you. We presented you with all those reports. So I want you to please take all that into consideration when making any decisions. And again, anti-commandeering doctrine. Look it up. Mr. City Attorney, I hope that you have also looked it up because we did bring it to your attention, and I don't see that anywhere in this report either. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, Noor Shaheen?
Good evening. My name is Nanor Shaheen. I'm a board-certified behavioral analyst. I'm a clinical director at a behavioral agency called Promise MBA, and that binder that I created for you, it was just to give you lots of information about how 5G can actually affect autism specifically. I moved to United States 10 years ago, and when I moved, I specifically knew that I'm here to study about autism and to become a board-certified behavioral analyst, to provide service to individuals with autism. I have two family members with autism in my family. They're resident of Glendale, and more than 60% of the clients that I provide services to directly, they're living in Glendale. So, this is very personal to me. So, I mentioned 10 years ago, because when I moved here, the rate of autism was 1 in 110 children. Today, the rate is 1 in 45. With the information that I provided to you, if you see on the hover, it says that if we don't change anything, in 33 years, you're going to have 1 in 4 children with autism. This is because if we approved 5G, you guys are going to make this go even faster. I was very disappointed by the reports that we received, and it seems like the people, with all respect, I appreciate the effort, but it seems people who make this report, they didn't have access to Google, because I Googled all of this information, and it was easily, if you just Google 5G and autism, you're going to get lots of information about how 5G can possibly affect arrays of autism and other behavioral issues. And we're going to have a beautiful city of Glendale, which I'm very proud of, I love to be in Glendale, but we're going to have this beautiful city that is quiet, as it was mentioned in the report, with lots of people with behavioral issue that are going to make lots of noises. You're going to be seeing tantrums in the streets. You're going to have more special needs classes in the schools. And I'm not here to tell you what to do, obviously. I truly appreciate everything that you do for the city of Glendale, but I'm here to provide you with some resources and just tell you that, please, give us the opportunity, a special meeting with you, a study meeting, so that we can provide you with more information, we can bring you more evidence to show you that not only this is very dangerous for the health, and what is extremely important for me personally and for my group of, you know, friends, human rights activists, is that this is going to cause more individuals with behavioral issues and autism. It's not me saying that, there is tons of research that I provided. There is 25 pieces of evidence in that binder, and I was just trying to be nice and not overwhelm you even with more information. If it's needed, I will be more than happy to provide more information. My email address is there, and I will be more than happy to provide you with additional information and actual people that, you know, dealing with autism on daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Anahid Dermagardichian?
Good evening, City Council. I've been here a few times. Today, I would like to give my time to roll in a series, if possible.
We are not going to, I'm going to have to deny your request, so.
Okay. If that's the case, I wasn't prepared to talk today, because I thought I can donate my time. But you heard me before, I have two kids who go to Hoover and Toll, and two of the cell towers will be next to their schools. And I've already told you my concerns about this. If you can't do anything, at least consider not having the cell towers next to the school. Thousands of kids, that you're putting their health in danger. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Mohell? Rafi? Just Rafi? Juliette Shirikjian? Okay. Nani Shirikjian?
I would like to give my time to Rola.
Well, I'm not permitting that, but I invite you to let us know what you think. You sure?
I have passed, but I...
You sure?
But I would like her to continue.
I know, I can't do that, but I can, I can give you three minutes.
We have plenty of time. Why are you delaying?
Okay, thank you, because I'm running the meeting. Anne Kirkpatrick?
Hi. The FCC standards are not safe, and California often leads an example for the rest of the country. And if all the California cities start allowing the 5G small cell towers, then, you know, we're already, they're already putting up satellites. Once those go in, you're not going to be able to go anywhere on the planet without being exposed to it. And what I saw up here was a lot of talk about aesthetics. I don't care what it looks like, I don't want to get cancer. And it's just thousands of studies proving, proving that it causes cancer, heart problems, autism, fertility problems, altered DNA, fatigue. There's just a million, like, environmental problems with it. It kills bees, it's bad for wildlife, not just people. The firefighters in California have, are exempt, they don't want the 5G cell towers at the firehouses, because they got, they were getting sick from the wireless radiation, so they do not allow it. It's not allowed there. The shot clocks, you know, 60 to 90 days is not enough time for the cities to show that they're opposed, you know, the, all the reasons why they're opposed to the towers going in. And, you know, no offense, but cities in general work slow, so that's, that doesn't seem like much time. Fiber optics is a great alternative to wireless technology. I was learning more, as I learned more and more information on this, it's just, okay, so the US standards that are being allowed by the FCC are 600 to 1,000 megahertz. So, just to have a, you know, the idea of comparison, okay, so cell phones, the minimum strength that they need to operate is like point nine zeros and a two. For children to have headaches, irritation, concentration problems, behavior problems, point zero five. The building biology guideline is point one. Laptops, Wi-Fi, that amount, the amount that they give off is sperm, DNA problems, decrease in sperm, that's at 1.0. Headaches, dizziness, fatigue, irritability, weakness, insomnia, chest pain, difficulty breathing, indigestion, 1.0. Heart problems, 2.5. Changes in the heart, 4.0. DNA, 6.0. Smart meters, 7.93, which we all have on our houses now. Other countries, like Switzerland, they're only allowing 9.5.
Ms. Kirkpatrick, your time is up.
And again, we're at 600 to 1,000, that's what we allow.
Thank you. Arminie Oganyan?
This is my first time ever coming up here, just, I'm here to raise my voice, to say that I am against the 5G towers, and I'm here to support a lot of the parents, which my, my kids go to Mark Keppel School. And a lot of the parents actually wanted to come out tonight to come and support this, so I'm here to represent them. And I'm here to just let out my voice and to let you guys know that I'm against it, and I really wish there's something we can do. I don't know if there's signatures that we can get, or anything like that, to help stop this. Is there anything we can do to stop this, or?
So, we can't have a back and forth, but when you, that's something that we're probably going to be discussing?
Yeah, it's like a discussion, it's like, I have questions, I have nothing prepared to talk to you guys about, but I'm just saying I'm really against it. And to the point, if this does go through, I'm very considering moving and taking my kids out of the schools that go there. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't have any other cards from the public on this item. Mr. Garcia? Is there anything the city can do? Let's assume, let's assume that, that we believe, or the council makes a finding, that there are adverse health effects to the 5G network. Given, let's not get into the debate on whether it is or not. With the current state of the federal legislation, what options does the city have to prevent these from coming in? And I know that Ms. Marjorie Rosyan covered that. Aside from the time, place, and manner, and the aesthetics, what can we do? There's discussion of the anti-commandeering statute, someone was talking about ADA and fair housing. I imagine that if we deny a permit, either based on the delay in the shot clock issues, or say that this is causing adverse health effects, will be sued by the carriers in federal court, and the judge will be presented with, with this law, the legisla, the, you know, the federal codes, 42 USC at sequence, and there'll be a ruling, I presume, against the city. And that will come at a cost to the city. I mean, play this out for me, and let us know what our, what our options are in dealing with this.
Certainly. Mr. Mayor, members of council, and you're right, and this starts with the supremacy clause of the United States Constitution, which says, "An act of Congress is supreme over the laws of the states and the local governments." And in that, using, utilizing that authority, Congress has enacted a law which grants to the FCC the sole exclusive right over the health and environmental effects of RF emissions. So, I do believe that, you know, it is a hypothetical, but in the hypothetical, if the city, any city was to deny a wireless telecommunications permit on the basis of RF, the health effects or environmental effects of RF emissions, that they would lose such a challenge. The anti-commandeering statute is a statute, it's a, sorry, it's a provision of the Constitution which says, the federal government cannot force the states to enact or implement, or enact or enforce federal laws. So, it's used, it's, it's, it's a very limited scope, but it wouldn't, in our view, wouldn't apply here. This is basically just a federal government saying, "This is how a private activity shall be regulated. Cities and states can do this, they can't do this." What my understanding of, and we have, we have researched it, and Doreen can get into a bit more, we have, it essentially prohibits state, federal government from requiring the federal, the state governments or local governments to actually enforce state law. So, if, giving an example of relevance perhaps, if the federal, I believe, if the federal government were to say that the states and local governments had to enforce, require legally to enforce federal immigration law, I think there'd be, in that case, there'd be more credible argument that that particular type of statute might run afoul of the anti-commandeering statute. I don't know how it would have turned out, but I think it would certainly be a much more credible argument. In the area of regulation of private activity, the supremacy clause would control, in our view. That's our understanding of all the cases, and that's, that's how it would, in our view, shake out. And again, I don't, the anti-commandeering statute is very limited to a specific set of circumstances, not applicable here.
Mr. Quintero?
The speakers have mentioned other cities that have sued on this issue. Do you know where that stands?
I know, we know, for example, that many cities, some cities have challenged the most recent shot clock orders, and on the basis that it doesn't comply with the federal rules. So, even, even if the federal agency is given authority to enact rules, they have to follow, obviously, first of all, they have to follow the statute, and then they have to follow certain procedures in enacting those rules. So, for example, when they, when they adopted the most recent rule reaffirming the RF emission rule, they're required to engage in a certain amount of administrative activity, they can't just, they don't just say, "We're not going to make any changes." There are other, the, one of the cases that was mentioned was that NRDC case, that's a challenge specifically where FCC tried to say, you don't have to look at the wireless carriers and their applications, don't have to give any consideration to environmental effects under the National Environmental Policy Act or the Historic Preservation Act. And one of the courts has said, and that court, I think, it's not final, but one of the courts has said, you can't just unilaterally do that, you have to make them go through some sort of environmental review, which, which we do here now. With this case of small cells, 99 and a half times out of 100, they're going to be exempt from CEQA, but there's still a process there. So, the cases that we're aware of, there's some more recent cases challenging the shot clock rules, nothing specifically that's on point, challenging the FCC's most recent RF emissions.
Okay, so the challenges have been on the shot clock. Now, in terms of extending around a school, a sort of moratorium or whatever, 1,000 feet of any school yard or school facility, is that something that cities or school districts have challenged that you know of, or something we could do?
Let me have Doreen come up and address that. So, we, there are some cities that have addressed it by having the moratorium or distance requirement, and as we'll explain, it's, we have the same requirement, we just stated in reverse, so.
Mayor Najarain, council members. So, I looked at different ordinances, it was Mill Valley, Fairfax, Elk Grove, Petaluma, Calabasas. And what some of the cities have done is, yes, they have enacted in their ordinance, they have said, "No facilities within 1,000 feet of a school," or "No small cells in a residential area." However, what they have done, and I have the ordinances with me, and I have tabbed them, they have the prohibition, or they have the buffer zone, and then they make exceptions. There is another provision that says, "However, we have this prohibition. However, if the carrier can show us that they meet the exceptions, which are no alternate sites, they need to be there to cover a gap." And they've done their due diligence, and they, they can't be anywhere else, then the exception has to be granted. And it's stated as such, so that they're not in violation of the federal statute that says that they can't be prohibitive, or have the effect, be a prohibitive statute, or in effect be a prohibition to having the wireless carriers install their facilities. So, yes, there are ordinances like that, however, with an exception.
And so far, as you know, they still, they haven't been challenged by Verizon, AT&amp;T, or any of the?
As far as I'm aware, no, they have not. And I would submit that it's because they have the exception, and if the carriers meet the exception, then they will be granted permission or the permit to install the facilities where they're proposing to.
Yeah, so, generally, there's two types of challenges to such a regulation. One would be a facial challenge, saying, "It's unconstitutional in face, there's no lawful application of it." Another one is to wait until a carrier makes an application, and then is denied on the basis of the distance requirement or the, you know, ban on the residential zone, and so, that might take a little bit longer to be litigated. And I suspect if there's a case where a carrier can't show that they can't provide it on an alternative site, then, then they're not going to be able to win that case. So, in terms of the ban in the residential zones that Doreen referenced in some of the ordinances, we have the same thing, in a manner of speaking, because we have preferred versus non-preferred zones, and you have to make the same findings when you're the approving agency to deny it. And while we don't have a similar type of preferred zone for, for example, 1,000 feet from a school district, we're still going to be required to, to make that finding.
Mr. Garbajian?
Just want to follow up on the, on the same line of comments or questioning. One, we have in our report on the page 17, it says FCC declined to reevaluate the radio frequency exposure policy as it pertains to children. Can you tell me when was the last time that that study was done, or that evaluation was done?
1996.
1996, okay. So, so, we all know that the cell towers today are maybe, I don't know, 500, I'm not an expert in this field, but I can tell you, it's maybe 500 times stronger than what we had in 1996. And just to say that the effects are very minute and very small, and they don't want to reevaluate, I think that's a, that gives us a little bit of a wiggle room to come up with an ordinance, this is, I think, we need to look into, that there are, there are non-preferred zones, right, in our ordinance?
Correct, yes.
Schools and parks can be part of that non-preferred zones, because we have, if I'm not mistaken, 33 schools altogether, and 47 parks, right? In a large city, what is the size of a city? 32 miles square? 32 miles square? In a city like this, I don't know how can they make a finding that there is no coverage, and they have to have it, you know, adjacent to a school site, or inside of a park. Babe Herman Park, I, you know, we practiced AYSO there for years, that tower, that the buzzing sun doesn't go away. And I voted against a couple of these towers in parks, one was in New York Park, one was in Fremont Park, and I don't remember what was the third one. There were three of them that I voted against it, because no one can tell me that they have no health effect. I'm not a doctor, but I can tell you even that, that there is a health effect. We don't know what it is now, because this hasn't been around for, for decades. So, and the question that I have, the difference between 3G, 4G, and 5G, is it what the, what they provided, is that, is, I'm not questioning you, I just want to make sure that it's 600 versus, the frequency, is it 20, what was it, 24 versus 4 or 5 megahertz? They provide some information like that. So I think we can look into our code and non-preferred zones, and include schools and parks and 1,000 feet away from them. Again, this is a very large city, and my question is today, if they say there's a gap in coverage, what do people do now? I mean, you know, we're in a rural lands, you know, part of the house doesn't have any reception, but the other parts does, and we live with it. I don't know what this non-coverage comes from, as to, is it the number of users increase? Is it the number of devices that we have? Do we need more speed? I don't, I want to understand what is it that, that they say there is no coverage, and they have to have it next to a school, or inside of a park? So I think that's something that we really need to look into, and this is a private business. It's not, it's not just a nonprofit that serves the entire country. These are all private entities. We all use our phones, we all need our computers, we all need internet. I'm not, I'm not disputing that. We, we live on these things now. I mean, every, every so often, you have to look at your phone, even if there's nothing in there. It's just, our children are being raised by social media and smartphones. But I want to, I want to make sure that, you know, we look after the well-being of our residents as well, because 20, 30, 40 years down the road, we are going to see what the effects were, and scratch our heads, and I don't want to be in that position to regret the decisions that we make today. So I think we, we have to look into our non-preferred zones and include our schools and parks in there, to be 1,000, at least 1,000 feet away from these facilities. And the fact that they don't want to do any research from 1996, it's, it's, it's kind of disturbing.
So I don't think it's as easy as just saying, our schools are non-preferred, and our parks are non-preferred. They're going to say, we've got, we've got 1,000 kids, let's say, Keppel, Toll, Hoover, and they all have cell phones, and they all need to call home and do whatever they have to do, and the phone company is going to say, look at all this demand we have, right here in this area, and we can't meet it with a, with a site half a mile away. And there's their case right there. I mean, I'm, I'm just presuming that that's what they would say. It's not as simple as saying, it's a non-preferred zone, don't put it here. You have to go through that analysis, and if they show that there is a gap, or there's not enough, tell the kids not to bring their phones to school, and then maybe, maybe the, maybe the non-preferred zone will hold water.
Council, Mayor Nidarian, council member Garbichin, council members, thank you for your comments. So I am not a technical expert, but I've educated myself on how these providers present the gap in coverage, or the need to be at a certain area. And what they do is they submit propagation maps to us. And the propagation maps will show, for example, a macro cell that provides cell coverage for an area. And that's telephone, cellular telephone coverage. And then the, these providers will come in and propose to install their small cell facilities on a streetlight and the public right-of-way to provide data coverage, or to provide the capability for different electronic devices to speak to each other, communicate with each other, if you will. And so the small cell facilities are in addition to the macro cells that are already in existence. So the coverage is slightly different between the coverage that we use to make a phone call on our cell phones, versus the coverage that we need, as you indicated, when school, school kids, my son included, they get out of school, and they start streaming, you know, videos, or they use data. So they do submit the propagation maps to prove that they need to be there.
Mr. Garbichin.
Well, I think the difference is the range. The 5G range is short, that's why they need to have those, those towers on 150 feet away from each other. If the range was longer, they would need to have those in, in this, you know, what are non-preferred zones. I think the, that is the difference. And the fact that they, you know, there are this, again, this is all, you know, technologically advanced stuff, that, you know, we don't have enough information tonight, but, and we're not approving anything. This is just a note and file for public to know. But the, the issue is that the 5G needs shorter distance, because it doesn't travel, but it's very strong. So the 3G and 4G doesn't, doesn't do that, they have a longer range. And I think the argument from the city side would be, well, maybe we use the 3 or 4G around the schools, and we use 5G somewhere else. I don't know, but we need to look into making this a non-preferred zone, and see what the, what the challenge will be from there.
If I could, so I think, to your point, and it's a good one, the technology is different, the need is different, but I will say that the FCC's rules are always geared towards encouraging and incentivizing the rollout of the new technology. We are not as locally permitted to discriminate between carriers or between technologies. So if they say this is why, but to your point about having a, adding to the non-preferred zones of, you know, parks or schools, that is probably something within the city's authority, but keeping in mind, we'd have to, that would be something we'd have to study to see what would be the impact on the siting of these facilities, and then keeping also in mind that the standard for approval is still going to be the same, whether we call it a preferred or non-preferred zone. But if, if that's a policy call for the council, if that's, you want that additional layer of review or scrutiny for those areas, that's certainly within your power. We just wanted to emphasize for, so there's not this perception, if the council were to go down that road, that the rules, the rules may change, but the actual, the rollout, it may be, it'll be judged by the same standard, being, is this particular facility necessary to cover a gap, and are there alternative sites in, in the preferred zones? That, that's, it's going to be the same question, no matter how you slice it. But it's certainly, you want that extra layer of review, that is within the legislative purview of this council.
That would be my, my preference, my suggestion, so I want to hear from my colleagues as well.
Mr. Quintero.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, any additional layer that you put in front of the carriers, I think it's just human nature and business sense that they might be interested in going somewhere else. Unfortunately, that doesn't help the overall population, but at least we defend ourselves here in Glendale as much as we can, because the FCC and the Congress leaves very little, very little room for a maneuver.
Any other comments?
Well, I'll take a second. The bottom line for me here is, I still don't know what we can do. I just, I just hear that if they can find a gap, prove that there's a gap, and there's no other better location, that's it, we're done. Hands tied, we move on. If there's another layer that we can add to this, then, and I'm all for that, but I just am perplexed in the fact that, that, you know, I hear about all of these studies, and all of this, the, you know, the impacts of, and I just don't understand why we don't know about that, or the country doesn't know about that, or, you know, citizens don't know about that. It just doesn't make any sense to me. And I'm sure it's the bottom line, that it always is, but I think whatever we can do at this level to protect, you know, our kids and the people that live here, and then that's what we should do. I just don't know what that is. I just don't know what that is.
Mr. Egerjani.
My first question from staff, I guess, is, why this issue is in front of us now?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilman Egerjani, I think because residents have approached the council for additional regulation, to look at issues regarding RF emissions, to look at other issues, like adding to our non-preferred zones, or bans, or whatever, so that's why we're here, to provide you an overview of the federal and state law that applies to us, applies to you as decision makers, and see if there's, if you want to add to those regulations within, within the existing federal and state framework, or maintain the current, the current regulations that we have. And I've heard some feedback that you'd like to look at some preferred zone, we'd want to hear from the entire council on that, of course. But to that, and I think to the, to the question in general, I, you know, certainly, I understand the frustration. You're the policymakers, you're the ones who have the, the connection with the members of the community as elected officials, but I could tell you, as a staff, we are frustrated too. We deal with this not only on the federal regulation side, but the state regulation side, and having to come and explain to you that, you know, the federal and state governments are continuing to encroach on your authority. And I certainly understand the frustration, but we're just trying to lay out for you what those, what those parameters are, so we don't get ourselves into, into legal risk, but at the same time, providing you the maximum ability to regulate the, these, these facilities.
So what would happen if we would review this six months later? What would be the difference?
Nothing, we'd just be waiting six months.
Okay, so I'm just asking now, about that law of what, which has been mentioned here in 1842 anti-commandeering, I guess. The speaker spoke such that that is applicable now? If you can answer now?
Sure.
Or you can answer later, I don't care.
We can give you a more expansive answer later. I, I tried to respond earlier, just to say that it's, it's a stat, it's a provision of our constitution, of the United States Constitution, which says, the federal government cannot require state or local governments to enforce or adopt their laws. We have to comply with them, but you can't, and again, so I don't think that's, this area of law falls within anti-commandeering. It falls within the, with the supremacy clause, which says, federal, the federal law is supreme to state and local laws, and that's what we're requiring. So again, we don't, that's the, that's the layperson's answer to that question, and we're happy to provide a little bit more explanation of those cases from the, the 1800s. And actually, I think there was a couple more recent, more recently, I mean, by recent, I say 30 years old instead of 150 years old. But again, it's a different area of law, it is very unique to a specific set of circumstances that I don't, I don't think are applicable here.
Now, this is, I want to talk about, the speakers constantly, they said there are thousands of studies, and they presented the package, but those studies did not, as has been mentioned here, apparently, we can't come up with our rules and regulations. The city, I mean, or me, or others. And those studies should be presented, in my opinion, to FCC or other regulating bodies. I mean, to present to me, because I spoke to some of the speakers here, and I interviewed some of the speakers on TV about this issue. But the way I'm looking at it, maybe there are lots of studies, and maybe they are saying something that we have to pay attention. But however, I see, I don't have that power to have any impact on this issue, the way I understand, unless somebody explained to me differently. The way I look at it, this, this is a matter between FCC and all those who are complaining, and we can't do much, in my opinion, unless things changes in future. I had cellular phone since 1980. I had this giant briefcase, and I had my phone in it, there were lots of equipment. I had to put my antenna on top of the car to use it. And while you were driving, and that was only you could use it inside the car, because you had to connect to certain things, and charge it, now it's different. And I remember while I was driving through some section of Los Angeles, the connection would cut off, because there was no coverage everywhere. There were certain areas that you can, you could use the phone, and it would cut off some other places. However, what I'm trying to say, I know these waves are very dangerous, regardless what who says, but some dangerous activities we have to do, we have no other choice. We have to come on the street, cross the street, it's very dangerous, but may not be as dangerous as this one, I don't know. But nobody can tell me about the danger of waves. Two years and four days ago, not long ago, two years and four days ago, I had a stroke, and somebody told me that this is as a result of, of course, it's not any study about it, but just mentioned to me, since I'm using cellular phones for such a long time, and I'm working in TV station, I'm a TV commentator and host, that we have so much equipment, and the waves, and they said, all this may be impacted on me. So I'm more vulnerable practically than anybody else in this room, and maybe 90% of public in Glendale, I mean. But however, I don't see a solution, nobody comes up with solution, what we can do. I don't see that solution. There are studies you have mentioned, there are problems, maybe it's true, I don't know. Because as you see, FCC says, they read it here, that it doesn't cause any problem. I really don't know the truth. So, so I'm baffled, that what's the?
No, you, sorry. No, thank you.
I met, I met you and some others, so I heard everything. You presented me documentation, I tried to read and explain on TV, but I'm saying, this is not that easy, at least for me. Maybe it's clear to you, but I, a person who studies a lot, that I have to present programs, I constantly read and study, but to me, this is very confusing, and it's not clear where we stand. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to bring this to a conclusion, seeing it's a note and file, but briefly, briefly, things that you, things that you haven't said.
Yeah, I'd like to take at least a first step, even if it's a small step or limited step, and explore the idea of having a non-preferred zone around the schools.
Parks.
And the, the parks. And let's see if we can get an additional layer of safety, if you want to call it that, and I think that's a good way to think about it, and see what we can do, what we can do in that small sphere. And look, overall, I agree 100% with the presenters. At the very bare minimum, the FCC is not, or the, or the carriers, for that matter, they are not interested in exploring or looking at the possibilities that there may be an effect on, on children and on adults. They, they don't want to look at it. Years from now, when the science is conclusive, then they'll shake their head and say, oh, gee, well, we didn't know at the time. They have no interest in looking, so, but let's at least do this, as sort of a first step, and then hopefully, people who are interested in this issue, which should be all of us, are going to continue to battle at the federal level, because that's really the only way we're, we're going to make any changes. Even at the state level, it's not going to work.
Mr. Garbichin.
Thank you, I agree 100%. I think we're not reinventing the wheel, that non-preferred zones exist today in our code, and those are the residential neighborhoods, those are the, and the schools and parks are inside the residential neighborhoods. They're not in an industrial area or all commercial area. I think we need to look into adding the schools and parks to the non-preferred zone, and we're not losing anything. All we do is we're making it a little bit safer for our kids, who, who are in the parks and our schools, our children. We have 26, 27,000 kids. our children. We have 26, 27,000 kids in, in our schools. And if we wait six months, eight months, how many applications do we have today?
One particular carrier, we had 23, 22, which were, had been approved, and one that's come to the council for appeal in a couple weeks.
So 23 and 22, that's one carrier, and the rest of them can ask for the same thing. So within the six months, you can have maybe, I don't know, a few hundred towers installed in these areas, while we can do, you know, do something at this. I know we can't go fight the federal government tomorrow, but at least this, the non-preferred zones to be extended to schools and parks, I, I think we need to do that.
Okay. Well, let me tell you what I think. I agree that there are effects, are effects on humans, but I think we're fooling ourselves to play this game with preferred zones or not preferred zones. They're going to jump through those hoops just as quick as a trained poodle at the Westminster Dog Show. They know what they're doing, they're well represented, they're going to show those gap maps, they're going to show that we've got 1,000 students at Hoover Temple Cole, and they, at lunchtime, they all get on YouTube, or TikTok, or whatever those new platforms are, sucking that power, and it's going to be just like that. It doesn't please me to say that. I mean, I want to be with you, I want to fight this thing, but I don't want to fool you. I can read statutes, I'm an attorney. He's a TV host, I'm an attorney. I read federal statutes all day long. These statutes are ice cold. These are ice cold against us. And I don't want to, I don't want to be sent on a fool's errand to try and give you hope that we're blocking this by increasing the non-preferential zones. That's not going to do a darn thing. Why don't you vote for the appeal? The next item is an appeal coming before us. We hear that as council?
Yes.
It's about a location, and I haven't read the paperwork, but it's, it's a location, the sighting of a cell tower, correct, or a location?
Correct.
Well, I think it's at that point, you know, if, if you guys feel strong, and you're willing to risk a challenge by the telecom communication companies, vote no, and, and accept the appeal. I don't know, I'm just, I, I don't want, I don't think we have an opening. This argument should be made to Adam Schiff, this argument should be made to Judy Chu, it should be made to all our representatives, to Bernie Sanders, you know, they're going to be in town, but they got an election coming up, and they're going to have a lot more influence on this than your Glendale City Council, let me tell you that. That's who you should be getting in front of and making your argument to. I wish we could change it, but we can't. So, that being said, I'm open to the council to either move it for, to note and file, or to have a motion directing staff, either way.
I want to have a motion directing staff to look into making schools and parks part of that non-preferred zone that we already have in our code. And we know we can't fight everybody, but at least we have to do what we can do.
I agree, I agree. Second. Okay, let's take roll call. Well, do we need to note and file too, or that's a formal?
It's.
Okay, so this is motion directing staff, staff will come back to us. How soon does that take to do?
We'll have to assess that. I mean, there's a couple steps to it. One is to kind of give you a lay of the land of how that would specifically work, then you could initiate it, then we'd have to go through a process, which would include the planning commission for the, the private, private owned properties, the zoned properties, essentially. So it'll be a while. But we can, you know, we'll, we can start the process and then report back to you on, on what it'll look like, and what that timetable will look like.
Can we ask the school district if they want to restrict cell phones in their schools?
They've, they've, they've sent notices on prior, on the AT&amp;T application opposing them. Mostly, though, because of the concerned parents, they're not specific.
Because it's a team effort. I mean, it takes, it's supply and demand. If there's no demand, they don't have to supply the telecom. Okay, so let's take, if, if that motion and direction is clear?
It is.
Let's take roll call.
Councilmember Zagajanian?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Mayor Njarion?
Yes.
Next item?
If you'll just permit me, an apples and oranges, the Vietnam vet that spoke earlier. So there's a famous chemical company, Monsanto. They came up with something that the military termed Agent Orange, that they, in Vietnam, you would sometimes see the planes flying over the mountainsides, and eventually, there weren't any leaves, everything died. The after effects of Agent Orange became apparent right off the bat, very quickly. It became apparent to those soldiers and Marines that were affected by it. That eventually was transferred on to their children, to the birth of their children, deformities, et cetera. The Department of Defense, the Veterans Administration, everyone denied that literally for decades, what was happening in front of their eyes. So while it's apples and oranges, and two different eras, and so forth, I also see here that the FCC has absolutely no interest in, in what may be happening.
Next item, please.
Next item is hearing. 9A is Director of Community Development regarding extension of urgency ordinance regarding accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. Consideration of refunds of development impact fees and covenant agreement fees for ADUs issued permits prior to January 1st, 2020. A1 is an introduction of an urgency ordinance of the council of the City of Glendale, California, extending ordinance number 5939 establishing interim standards and ministerial procedures for reviewing and approving applications for accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. Two is a resolution amending citywide fee schedule pertaining to fees for ADU covenant agreements. Three is a motion authorizing refunds of development impact fees for ADUs issued permits prior to January 1st, 2020, and have not received certificates of occupancy. Four is a motion authorizing partial refunds of covenant agreement fees for ADUs that have not received certificates of occupancy.
Thank you, Ms. Beers.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we're going to go directly to Ms. Asp, who will cover these items that are before you this evening, and ask for your feedback related to the development impact fees, as well as the covenant agreement fees for ADUs that were issued prior to January 1st of 2020.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, and I'm opening the public hearing. Mr. Garcia?
I'm sorry?
Oh, sorry. Will you let me know when I need to step out of this discussion?
Right. So we have to have that discussion on the ordinance first, and then the, the new fee, and then before we discuss the refunds, Mr. Njarion will have to step out.
Okay, so just.
Yeah, we'll, we'll follow, just making sure.
Okay, so this'll change a little bit the order. Good evening, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As stated, there are four pieces to, to this item. The first is an extension of the urgency ordinance that the council took action, adopted last month, and the next three items relate to fees. So just as a reminder, December 10th, council adopted an urgency ordinance to establish interim standards for ADUs and junior ADUs. However, that ordinance expires within 45 days, and staff is asking to extend, extend that ordinance and those standards for an additional 10 months and 15 days, for a total of one year, in order to give, give staff time to research other ordinances being prepared by other cities, to evaluate setback requirements for detached accessory garages, analyze any local data related to street widths that could have a safety impact, and then return with permanent standards. That would go through, through a thorough public hearing process before the planning commission with a recommendation, and come back to city council for, for consideration. And then I will skip to the, one of the other components, which is related to covenant and agreement, covenant agreement fees. Currently, accessory dwelling units use the existing, the existing covenant agreement fee that is in the citywide fee schedule. That fee is $2,340. It was council-directed staff to, to take a look at that, and staff determined that the covenant agreement fees, or the work that goes into those covenant agreements, could be simplified for accessory dwelling units, and are therefore, a resolution is before you tonight to add a covenant agreement fee specific for ADUs at $364. Then I'll quickly jump back to the development impact fees refund. Also, back in December, council did give direction to staff to refund the parks and libraries' development impact fees that were collected on ADUs that have been issued a building permit but have not received a certificate of occupancy. Staff estimates this number to be at 83, give or take. There might be one or two out there that we didn't capture, but the estimate is 83, it's pretty accurate. The refunds would be provided to the party that paid. There would be no requirement for a refund application. This amount is approximately $390,000. So in that same vein, if, similar to the development impact fee refunds, if council has inclined, a motion is also included to authorize a partial refund to each owner who has paid the covenant agreement fee, but again, has not received a certificate of occupancy on their accessory dwelling unit. The refund would be $1,984, the difference between the current fee and the proposed fee. Again, the estimate is 83. There are additional 31 ADUs applications that have not been issued a building permit yet, but have paid the covenant agreement fee. The estimate of this is $226,000. And then finally, just to summarize, just general fees related to ADUs. There's an ADU review fee of $307. General plan check fees that is based on the square footage of an ADU range between 77500 to $12,000. These are, this includes development impact fees. Without development impact fees, it would be in the range of 2,800 to 7,300. Again, as a reminder, development impact fees for ADUs is $4,700. That is only for ADUs that are 750 square feet or greater. Again, the covenant agreement fee proposed this evening is 364. Again, we have approximately 84. And again, those same totals of 390 and 226, and the funds that they come from. That concludes my presentation. Available for any questions?
And?
Can you describe the covenant fees again? What exactly are covenant fees?
I'm sorry?
What are covenant fees?
Hold on, excuse me. So I'm gonna, I guess we thought we could neatly separate these issues?
Okay.
It doesn't look like we can, so I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay.
Or if you want, I mean, there's, I don't, my understanding is there were no cards submitted, or there's one card. Oh, now we have a card. Here, public comment, then we can have the discussion on the ordinance and the new fee, and then you recuse yourself after that to, for the council, the rest of the council to discuss the, the refund, if, if you want to do it that way.
I just don't want to run afoul of.
I think we'll.
Conflict of interest.
Ask the council to hold off any questions on the refund portion until Mr. Njarion's left the room, so that we can have a discussion, hear out Mr., Mr. Michaels, and then, and then, and then have a discussion on the extension.
All right, so let's take the card from Grant Michaels.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. My name is Grant Michaels. I'm the president at the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council. To keep everyone fair, I have no comments on the refund portion of the ordinance. I do want to go ahead and thank Kristin Asp for her presentation on this issue and others, before the homeowners coordinating council, and for taking our feedback into the urgency ordinance. In general, we are supportive of the ordinance and how it adapts and brings us in line with state law. We have learned, and we have certainly lobbied our legislators in Sacramento on these type of issues. Larger state issues and assembly bills were brought up tonight. Additionally, I'd like to thank Christine Powers for giving us a legislative update this past year, and we have been taking to addressing SB 50, other state legislation, with our legislators directly, and knowing that we need to work with the city council on how we address and adapt to that. So, in general, we do support the ordinance. We will be involved in the ongoing efforts to develop the permanent ordinance, and we'd like to conclude our comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't have any other cards. So, the items before us, let's just refresh ourselves. There's an introduction of the urgency ordinance, extending it for
10, 10 months and 15, 15 days?
10 months and 15 days.
And then establishing a new fee for the ADU covenants.
Okay.
Those are the two items you can participate in, and then we can have the discussion after that on the refunds.
Are the refunds and all that.
Have we moved the item? I have a couple of comments before you move the item.
Listen, again, we have to break it up and introduce the ordinance.
If you restrict it to items one and two?
Correct.
I can stick around. If not, I have to split. Mr. Garbitch?
I'm not going to mention this, the part that you're going to recuse yourself, but the fees for, I just want to make, because we were briefed on this item, and I had a couple of questions, because this, this report, there are two reports combined, and there was a fee for, for $2,348 for recording covenants on, on the properties who are building ADUs, and that fee is being reduced to $364. And the permit fees were combined, or maybe I can't talk about that.
You can talk about the fees, you just can't talk about the refund part of it.
Right, okay. So the permit fees that it's in the fiscal impact that's mentioned here, it's $7,500 to $12,000. But if you deduct that $4,700 development impact fees from it, it's not that amount. It's a lot less than $7,500. So, because it was kind of not confusing, but it was, you know, you had to read through the whole thing to understand what those fees are. So for the public to know those fees that are in this report are all being reduced, basically. So I move the item.
So plenty to say.
Yeah.
Mr. Quintero?
So the covenant fees, what, what is that required? What are they, what are they about?
So.
The covenant fees takes a document that, that covers all of the rules and regulations that apply to ADUs. Previously, it required, like, the owner occupancy requirement, but also adds things in there, like, it restricts them from being home shared or sold off separately, things of that nature. And that gets recorded with the county against the property, so that the owner is aware of, of, of all the parameters.
Right. And why did that fee go down?
Staff took a look at it and, and decided there was a lot of things that could be eliminated. Again, that, that covenant agreement fee was an existing fee within the citywide fee schedule. ADUs came about in 2017, and it's, it's reduced work.
Essentially, there's less staff work necessary for the ADU covenants compared to our covenants to hold as one, for example.
And where have the development fees gone? From what to what, in terms of?
The parks impact fee?
Yeah, parks impact fees.
They, they were $4,700. Actually, they were higher than that. They were at 18,000. The council asked us to drop that because the impact wasn't for an ADU, didn't believe the impact was. We dropped it down to $4,700. Then the state legislation said you can't charge those impact fees on properties less than 750.
Right. So it actually was 18,000?
Something like that.
And went from 18,000 to 4,700?
At the council's direction, yes.
And now it's zero?
The state says.
It'll be zero for those under 750 square feet.
So I move the item.
Hold on.
One and two.
So you'd like to introduce item eight, 9A1, you'd like to introduce the urgency ordinance?
9A1 and 9.
And you'd like to move the resolution at 9A2. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
9A2 is the resolution amending the city fee schedule?
Correct.
For the covenants. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Zagajanian?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Quintero?
No.
Devine?
Yes.
Mayor Njarion?
Yes. I'm going to recuse myself. The mayor pro temp is Ms. Devine.
Yes, okay. All right, any discussion on, let's see, three and four?
Yes, I have a comment.
Okay, Mr. Quintero?
Okay, well, I disagree that people living in ADUs are not going to have an impact on parks and other recreational activities. When we decided to pass an ordinance to that effect, we were looking specifically at new construction, and how it would impact parks, et cetera. So I see absolutely no reason that people that So I see absolutely no reason that people that live in ADUs, or more specifically, the homeowners or commercial multifamily owners that decide to get into the ADU business, that somehow they're restricted from going to parks or anything else. And I just don't like the precedent. I mean, you went in, you applied for the ADU, you looked at what the, the fees were, you paid the fees, and now the state law has changed and we're going to give those developers of the ADUs, we're going to give them a break. Doesn't make any sense to me, so I'll be voting no.
Mr. Garpetian?
I, I agree with you. Some of the, because we did discuss this issue, the ones that have occupancy permit already, they're not getting the, the break, but the ones that they just pulled their permits and they're in process, they don't... Am I correct? The ones that don't have an occupancy permit, that's what we decided to...
Right, no, I know. I know, I disagree with that. The minute they paid the money?
The money's gone.
Right, and got involved in the, in the system, to me, that's it. That's what they bargained for. And, and like I say, just for these people and in the future, I mean, people at ADUs are going to be using our parks.
Right, some of it. I think because of our directions, they, they crafted ordinance the way it is. So anyways, it's okay. I would like still to introduce the motion nine three, nine A3.
Needs a second.
Introduce the motion.
And four?
You're moving nine A3 and four?
Three and four?
Nine?
Three and four?
Three and four? Okay, four also, yes. I thought maybe to do it...
No, they can be done together.
One at a time.
It's up to you.
No, yeah, we can, we can do them both. Did, did you have any other comments, Mr. Garpetian, about that? And the reason this was, this was changed was because of council asking for, requesting this, correct?
That's correct. On the, on the impact fees?
On the impact fees.
On the, the covenant fee, we brought it to you because we thought you might want to have that discussion.
Right, yeah, okay.
We went through this, we agreed to.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion?
I'll second it.
Do we have a second, so we can take a vote on three and four? Nine A, three and four?
Councilmember Zagajanian?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Montero?
No.
Devine?
Yes.
Mayor Najarion?
That's quick. And the next item is?
Next item on the agenda is oral communications. This is where discussions on items not part of the agenda, there's a lot of time in it. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there'll be no debate or discussion. This is the manager, Mayor, for the matter to the appropriate department for investigation report.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any cards?
I believe there was one card. It was...
Was it Mr. Milano? Mr. Milano?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp, Devine, members of the city council. My name is Herbert Milano. I am pleasantly impressed by the level of the complexity of the issues that are before you and the manner that you're addressing it. I've, I don't envy you. It's very difficult today to get an assessment of what is true and not true, and with all the misinformation and fake news and everything else, it just becomes incredibly difficult to deal with the, the public in general and the perception that they have about the issues we face. I want to address the, the issue of the, the candidates that, and the questionnaires that you probably are going to be filling out or answering, in the hopes that other individuals will basically take up five of these questions. The first one that I'd like to make is a suggestion to say, to ask you whether you would be willing to have a summary record of all of the votes that you have made in a data format that we can access, because it's very difficult to figure out how you voted in the past. It would be nice to be able to get an ongoing tally, to be able to say, oh, yes, she voted for this, he voted for that, and so forth in a very quick way.
You can check my website.
The second one is, would you be willing to maintain a record of every meeting that you've had with people doing business with, before the city? Meaning, a record that we can tap on later on and say, oh, yes, you met with so-and-so and that person had an interest upon which had business. I think for the level of transparency that we need, I would like to see that. Hopefully, somebody will ask you that question. Now, it's a question strictly for council members. What decisions did you make or did you vote for that you now would take back? Or, or issues that had had an unexpected outcome that you'd be willing to take back?
Have you seen our application? Getting those questions? Done, done, Mr. Milano, go ahead.
Challenger, for challengers, on a scale of one to 10, how well do you understand the city budget? And I think it's a serious one. I mean, this is, for anyone to come in and make decisions on what is a budget, $850 million or so, it's no small task, especially when individuals don't have an accounting background or really understand finance. And the fifth one would be the following, would you support an annual report on quality of life indicators? Other cities have it, Santa Monica has it. I've been speaking about this since 2002. We used to, we created one report back then, and I still remember how valuable it was to give us a gauge, because how can you create a budget if you don't know what the outcome has been on their quality of life? Condition of roads and parks and accessibility for ADA, sidewalks, the cost of policing, the increases on the cost of policing, things like that. The reason why I want to mention these items is that in the process of looking at the ordinance that impacted me personally, the short-term rental ordinance, it affected me significantly, by the way, I look at a portion of it and I say, wait a second, this doesn't seem to have relevance to the justification. For example, if I want to go visit my children that live in Seattle and I want to go visit them for a month, my home is vacant for a month. So it's not for rental. It doesn't impact my neighbors in any way, so why can I do that? Your ordinance prevents me from doing that. If I am sick and I want to go for a two-month treatment for cancer, my home is vacant for those two months, I cannot do that. I'm penalized. And I was wondering if you would be willing to consider this portion of the ordinance that needs revisiting, because that apartment or that house is not going to be available for anyone for rental, meaning on a permanent basis. So it's not going to have an impact on the availability of residential homes available for the public who want to rent. And also, none of these problems that were presented, there is no record or evidence having to do with noise and problems that are actually documented. It's one of the reasons why I wanted the city to document it first and before you make a decision, to see if it is really there. The problem with bad information or misinformation or too little information is that it doesn't lead to good decisions. And it is precisely what you were facing today on the information on some of the issues that were presented. So we have some similarities. The federal government imposes restrictions on you that you don't like, the state government comes in and imposes restrictions on you you like, and then in turn you put in restrictions on us that we don't like. But all of them are based on something, quality data and quality information. And that's all that I'm asking, that if a decision that you made that was very comprehensive needs revisiting, would you be willing to consider that? And so I'm asking the city council to reconsider that section of the ordinance that you passed last month, because I think it needs revision as you begin to consider how it impacts the public. And that's all I can ask for. By the way, I'm really impressed with the way the city council is working. I'm very glad to be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Ms. Beers? We do a quality of life survey, don't we? The quality of life indicators, and the term is escaping me, I apologize, but yes, we do that by way of community services and parks through that department, and it has been done on intervals. They're not done on an annual basis, and that information does come to the city council. You have any idea when the next one will be? No, but I will find out and I'll, you know, absolutely. All right, okay, thank you very much. Thank you for those questions, Mr. Milano. Okay, is there any new business? None? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
We'll adjourn.
We are adjourned at nine sixteen. Good night.